We will now call a common council meeting of April 3rd, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukniak.
Here.
Alderman, Alderperson Marshall is excused. Alderman Gale. Alderman Guzekowski.
Here. Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Janine, would you start us out, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we hit the minutes, just a little housekeeping. When you're speaking, make sure you're up to the microphone and the microphone's going red. I was informed this weekend that some of our streaming stuff, they can't pick up on some of us up here as we're speaking. With that, we'll take a look at the minutes of 3/21/23. If everybody takes a few moments. And when you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, or discussion, we'll entertain a motion. Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2023.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Um, aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay. Item four is recognition and its consideration of a proclamation to Scott Koenig for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Catherine, would you please read that in record?
Certainly, council proclamation number 2302 to Scott C. Koenig for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Whereas on April 16th, 2013, Scott C. Koenig was appointed to the Police and Fire Commission by Mayor Steven Scafidi. And whereas on July 17th, 2014, Scott Koenig was elected as commission president by the members of the Police and Fire Commission and served in that capacity for eight years. And whereas Scott Koenig has been instrumental in the appointment of two police chiefs, one fire chief, and countless police officers, firefighters, detectives, lieutenants, sergeants, battalion chiefs, captains, and assistant chiefs. And whereas Scott Koenig served as a liaison between the citizens of Oak Creek and the Police and Fire Departments, ensuring that these departments run smoothly, effectively, and with the utmost integrity. And whereas throughout his tenure as a member of the Police and Fire Commission, Scott Koenig has dutifully served the city of Oak Creek in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. And whereas after 10 years of service, Scott Koenig resigned from his position on the Police and Fire Commission effective April 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Scott C. Koenig for his dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be, and he is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Scott Koenig, introduced and adopted this third day of April 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. I'll open it up. Council members, anybody?
Here, Dan, thank you, Alderman Dukniak, 3rd district. I'd like to thank Scott for his 10 years of service on the Fire and Police Commission. I've known Scotty for a little over 20 years. And in that time, more often than not, he's involved with organizations. He's been on committees, he attends special events, he works and organizes special events which benefit our community. I know he's not here tonight because he was working a major fundraising event at the community center on behalf of the Oak Creek Alliance Club. So he's truly dedicated a large portion of his life to making Oak Creek a better place. Honestly, when Scott goes to donate or volunteer to donate blood, I don't think it's red that comes out. I think what comes out of him is Oak Creek blue, without a doubt. Again, Scotty, thank you so very much for that dedication to our community and enjoy that extra time off on your new retirement pontoon boat. Again, Scotty, many thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, 1st district. I don't know Scott as well as Rich does, but, I mean, but if you're active in the community, either on council or a committee, or you attend any of the events, generally you're gonna see Scott there working. So I just wanna say thanks for all his time that he's given to the city.
Hey, Rob, I was just gonna mention, I think they have it summed up so well that the, he runs everything so effective. He's dedicated and his dedicated service to our city is just, those two words, that's kinda just summed up Scott. That's it, thank you.
But these guys said Scott has been an invaluable resource to the city. His service has been incredibly appreciated, so happy retirement.
Um, again, not to be redundant, Scott's very community-minded. He's, he does, he's part of a lot of civic clubs here. But more importantly, he gave of his time and talent, 10 years, to the city to make it a better place, to make our protective services the best they could be. So I wanna thank him on behalf of myself and the entire council for all his time and talent that he put in and the service he gives to the city. Offer you a great big thank you. And to all boards and commission members, they are really the backbone of what goes on in the city, quietly doing their job and preparing things for not only council, but plan and commission as well. It's amazing just what people are giving of themselves in the city to make this a great place to live, so. With that, motion, please.
Dukniak to approve council proclamation number 23-02 to Scott Koenig for dedicated services to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Uh, next we have a mayoral proclamation for National Public Health Week, which is happening currently, April 3rd through the 9th. Catherine, please read that in.
Certainly, National Public Health Week, April 3rd through 9th, 2023. Whereas National Public Health Week is a nationwide effort to recognize the importance of public health and educate the public policymakers and partners about issues important to improving the community's health. And whereas the goal of National Public Health Week in 2023 is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas the Oak Creek Health Department is dedicated to strengthening and empowering our community through collaborative partnerships, intentional outreach, and vital public health services. And whereas the vision of the Oak Creek Health Department is to equitably enhance our community's health. And whereas the Oak Creek Health Department works to protect all people from chronic and infectious diseases, prepare for and respond to public health emergencies, promote healthier environments, prevent unintentional injuries and violence, as well as promote health where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas the Oak Creek Health Department helps the community prevent, prepare for, mitigate, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. And whereas the Oak Creek Health Department serves as the chief health strategist, leading a collaborative, multi-sector approach to improve community health in numerous priority areas, including mental health and substance misuse. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim the observance of National Health, National Public Health Week as April 3rd through 9th, 2023 in the city of Oak Creek and offer appreciation to the Oak Creek Health Department dated this third day of April 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. At this time, I'd like to invite our health officer up to say a few words about our health department and our credible staff that comes along with it.
Hi, Darcy DuBois, I'm the health officer. Thank you for the recognition, the proclamation, we do really appreciate it. We have a really great team, some of them are here today. I'm really proud of the work that they do and they're very dedicated to serving the community and meeting the needs of all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Counsel? Steve?
Yeah, in my early, early years on the, on the council, I was on the, the board of health. And, you know, you really don't get a good understanding of what they do until you sit at a board of health meeting for, for a number of, number of years. And I appreciated that time. And I may have said this once before, but, before, but you heard the proclamation where they do a lot of work with other communities, which is great 'cause I don't think they could do a lot of things by themselves. But going way back a number of years, probably six, seven years before Andrew was here, there was this idea to try and merge health departments. And I was opposed to it because I really felt that we needed our own identity. We needed our own health department and I think, I think I was right. I really think that we having our own health department is just perfect. And I wanna thank Darcy because I was, again, I may have said this before, I don't wanna talk too long, but she called me up to say, hey, you wanna come in and get your free COVID, your first COVID shot? And I was there in like 10 minutes because I was clamoring to get that vaccine. And I walked into that old Kmart and I just saw the perfection that they were using to try the three health departments working together to get these, these people vaccinated. And I was so moved by it, I came back and, and volunteered a number of times when you went to other departments. And unfortunately, you didn't need volunteers anymore. But I just wanna say thank you for the hard work that all you folks do for the, for the folks in Oak Creek. Thank you.
Steve? Andrew?
So I just wanna, wanna say that I was here when we were having those discussions to merge, early on.
Didn't it start, it started with your predecessor, though?
Yes, and I'm so very happy we did not, so I thank you. But Darcy's leadership the last several years here, getting us through COVID, bringing on a really good team, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of temporary people, there's been a lot of young talent coming into that group downstairs and merging them with the veterans that we've had in the health department. I just can't fathom that we've had more momentum in our health department than we do right now in our history. So I wanna thank the team here for that, Darcy's leadership and everybody in the, in the health department for doing the really good, quiet work that, that they do. They're a very, very diligent group downstairs, so thank you for all your work.
Super. Just to add on to that, I think Andrew kinda summed it up. We don't always get, get a chance to recognize our departments publicly like this, but the health department plays such an important role. You talked about, you know, should we merge it, maybe, maybe we don't need it like it does. Well, 2020 obviously showed we really needed our health department. And most people in the public don't understand the role, actually, the health department in Oak Creek played countywide. They were major players along with some other departments in the county that helped lead the county through COVID as well. In an ever-changing situation, they were overworked and really put to the test. And honestly, you never complain, amazing. Given, given the circumstances we're in and how things were changing and evolving, kudos to you. Probably deserved more than a week, but we'll give you a week, how's that? So, um, no action will be needed, but again, thank you for all you do on behalf of the council itself. Item six is another mayoral proclamation. This one involves Arbor Day, April 28th, 2023. Catherine?
Arbor Day, 2023. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of one more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim April 28th is Arbor Day in the city of Oak Creek, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this third day of April 2023.
Thank you, Catherine.
Welcome.
Buddy on Arbor Day. Okay, uh, very quickly, so every year we do go out and symbolically plant the tree. Last year it was at Carrollton School, I believe. So I'm sure we'll have another location. But more importantly, throughout the city, we're improving our canopy all the time through our forestry department. And just today, I opened a letter that we were once again named the Tree City USA. So I will be passing that on with congratulations to our DPW, particularly our forestry department, that's responsible for all the green you enjoy here in Oak Creek. Um, I know it sounds, seems like we're developing quite a bit, but we're actually preserving quite a bit of green space and creating more as we're building, so. Congratulations to our DPW and particularly the forestry department. Okay, moving on, no action will be needed on item six. That will get us to our first public hearing, and that is consideration of proposed amendments to Article 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10 of Chapter 17 of the municipal code. Catherine?
Public hearing number one is to consider proposed amendments to Article 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10 of Chapter 17 of the municipal code, zoning and signed ordinance, date of notice is March 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Doug?
Thanks, good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek. And the first public hearing this evening is on a proposal to amend the municipal code, the zoning code, to allow for two uses that are not currently in there. One being the establishment of tattoo parlors, and the second for medical diagnostic labs. So back in September of last year, the plan commission undertook kind of its first amendment to the zoning code, recognizing it's, I'm probably a little over a year old now, and did actually recommend in the council pass several amendments to the municipal code. And from time to time, especially dealing with the new code, we'll find these situations where we might have missed something, or there might have been a new use that may have not been contemplated as part of the rewrite of the municipal code. And that was really the case here with tattoo studios. It was always a consider a conditional use under the old code. Did not make it into the new code for whatever reason. And staff and the plan commission in their review of that, and rightly so, came to the conclusion that they, they do have a role, they are acceptable as conditional uses in, I believe it's the V2 community business zoning districts as well as B4. And you'll, you'll see that one of the following agenda items actually does propose a tattoo studio in the B2 zoning district at the marketplace. So really correcting something that probably should have been put in the zoning code to begin with. The Second Amendment would be to allow for medical diagnostic labs. And we do allow, obviously, for doctors' offices, medical offices, things of that nature. And we do allow for some research labs as part of some other zoning districts. We really didn't have a good definition that would allow for these medical diagnostic labs. And one that has been proposed, 140 East Rossin Avenue. And staff, working with the applicant, came up with a definition that would allow for a medical diagnostic lab within our commercial zoning districts. Commission did review that proposed definition and it concurred with staff that it was appropriate to include that as part of our zoning code. So those are the two changes, and there's a lot of change, you know, when the notice was read off, there's a lot of sections of the code that need to be amended to allow for this. That's just the nature of the new code. I mean, we've got references to certain uses and certain types of regulations throughout the zoning code. So that's a lot of, a lot of amendments to just really to factor in for these two new uses that we'd be allowing as part of our zoning code. So with that in mind, the plan commission, again, they did review these and they have recommended their approval. This is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to include tattoo studios and medical diagnostic, sorry, medical diagnostic facilities as part of the zoning code, to please approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and/or comments to the common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, I will make three calls. This will be the first. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium, give your name and address. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on item seven? Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance amending table 17.0304 Sub C in section 17.1013 Sub J through 17.1013 Sub Y in Chapter 17 of the zoning and sign code of the municipal code. Steve?
Thank you. Doug, you, you said that September of last year was when we voted on the first revision of, of Chapter 17. And, and you know, if you, anybody looks at that chapter, the printed version is about two inches thick. When, when was it that you guys started working on the revision? How long did it take between you start and then when we voted?
The, the revision or the?
When you first started to look at it?
No, that wasn't that long, that was a month or two.
Okay.
But these, these types of, the issues that were contained in that first text amendment were really compiled over the course of that first year in our experience with the new zoning code. So while it's, it was really trying to identify those issues that came up during that kind of initial run with the new code. And what we didn't wanna do is we didn't wanna bring any text amendment to the plan commission and the council. Every two weeks, we tried to consolidate some of those. We're doing it a little bit differently this time around just because it's, it's really a little easier to digest and to understand rather than voting on this huge package of, of text amendments that some of the meanings can get a little bit lost or watered down when we did it the other way. So, and I think this is, this is especially important, given the fact that the timing lent itself to do this, given that we've got two potential businesses that would like to move into the city and to do so they need these text amendments.
Potential revisions are forthcoming because it's just, there's just so much to digest in such a big chapter and working through little things that may have been overlooked the first, first go-around?
Yeah, I mean, zoning codes, I mean, the good, good codes are not, like strategic plans perhaps, in their living documents. I mean, a lot of, we didn't wanna get ourselves locked into a, a code like we did prior to this where, where, you know, we had a bunch of uses which quite frankly weren't even relevant in, in today's world. Uh, this is, this code is flexible and should be looked at from time to time to make sure that we're addressing the needs of the community, you know, at the current time. And rather than just something that, a current or a static picture of what the community was like when the first code was first adopted.
Thank you.
Dan?
I didn't have the, three of the planning commissions, I just had a couple of questions. Globally, the B4, how much of Oak Creek's commercial area would you think is zone B4?
I don't have a number for you, but I think that's the, the most predominant commercial zoning category that we do have. And you'll see that along major commercial corridors like Howell Avenue and certainly Drexel Avenue and 27th Street and Main Road.
Cause right now, like on 140 East Rossin, we've been kind of doing this as a condition. So if, just if we, we allow labs in B4 globally across the city, we do allow medical offices. But I see it, I mean, in here you've, you've recognized small-scale medical diagnostic facilities would not be incompatible with the B4. What about stuff you don't anticipate being a big scale? How do you, how do you deal with the unexpected under that allowance?
I guess, you know, we have to, we kinda know it when we saw it, or something got, if Abbott Labs wanted to go in a B4 zoning district, obviously that's probably a little bit.
How do you deal with it, though, if you allow, allow that change city-wide in the B4?
That would be something with a larger scale and large, that magnitude would probably fit in better in one manufacturing district, as part of a manufacturing.
From your standpoint, do you believe we'd have enough control in the zone?
I do.
Process to make sure that it's not an incompatible use of the B4. Anything else come up with that, Danny, when you guys were discussing that?
No, when we were discussing it, the labs were on smaller scales such as, bad example, had like a, a blood lab or.
It seems consistent with the stuff we're currently doing.
Right, it, it really.
I'm just wondering about the unanticipated.
It really wasn't the experimental stuff going on, it was more just the diagnostic. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, motion on eight. Kirkowski make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3065, amending table 17.0304 C in section 17.1013J through 17.1013Y in Chapter 17, zoning and sign code of the municipal code.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a request by Mostly Harmless Inc. for a conditional use permit for a tattoo body piercing body art studio on a portion of the property at 8632 South Marketplace.
Public hearing number two, sorry, is to consider a request submitted by Julia Marie Ragley, Mostly Harmless Inc., for a conditional use permit for tattoo body piercing body art studio on a portion of the property at 8632 South Marketplace. Applicant is Julia Marie Ragley, Mostly Harmless Inc. Property owner is Raymond J. Guadizowski and Barbara Poklar Guadizowski, sorry. Legal description, date of notice, March 1st, 2023.
You, Doug?
Thank you. Public hearing number two this evening is on a proposed conditional use permit for the property at 8632 South Marketplace for a tattoo studio. And as we had discussed in the previous public hearing, now that, that oversight has been corrected and tattoo studios are now a conditional use in the B2 zoning district, these individuals, Mostly Harmless Tattoos is looking to open up an establishment in the marketplace, which is a B2 plan use development. And in accordance with the recently, very recently adopted ordinance, the conditional use permit has been presented to the plan commission. They have reviewed that and just, the, there was a, I believe it was in 2017 there, there was a tattoo studio which was permitted as part of the PUD and the marketplace department. So I think that the plan commission, incorrectly so, did recognize that it is a compatible use for that development. And based on that and based on the conditions and restrictions which were there, presented for the commission's review, they did recommend to the council that a, a conditional use permit be granted for a tattoo, or, I'm sorry, tattoo studio for the property at 8632 South Marketplace. Again, being a public hearing, I would request that anyone with any questions, comments regarding the proposal for a conditional use permit for a tattoo studio of the property at 8632 South Marketplace, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Once again, we will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. Third and final call. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and go to item 10, which is consideration of an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for a tattoo studio on the property at 8632 South Marketplace. Counsel? Discussion? Okay. Uh, seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
Gale will move to approve ordinance 3066, approving a conditional use permit for a tattoo studio on the property at 8632 South Marketplace.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 11 is consideration of a request by St. John Properties to rezone the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue from M1 Manufacturing to B4 General Business. And there will be no change to approve conditional use permits. Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Kristen Parks, St. John Properties, Inc., to rezone the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue from M1 Manufacturing to B4 General Business. No change to approve conditional use permits. Applicant is Kristen Parks, St. John Properties, Inc. Property owner, excuse me, is East Rossin Avenue LLC. Therefore, it's the legal description.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you. As, actually, as Alderman Gale alluded to in the previous item, or one before that might have been, the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue started off as a manufacturing plan and development. And in the course of our reviewing the users for that, it became clear to staff and the property owners that a lot of the thing, a lot of the users that were presenting themselves in the marketplace kind of fell more into the commercial realm. in the marketplace kind of fell more into the commercial realm. And as such, the, the council was granting a number of conditional use permits for these kind of quasi-retail-ish service businesses that really didn't fit within the manufacturing zoning district. So based on that, based on that recommendation, the staff worked with the applicants to do a number of things, amend the comprehensive plan to allow for, or to set the stage for a rezoning of this property to a commercial zoning district, which should cut down on a number of conditional use permits, hopefully that we see in the future. I mean, right now, it's thankfully, it's, it's, you know, there's a number of properties, a number of users that have currently leased space in there as you can see from the attached exhibits. But as, you know, as things turn over, you know, seen and the experience has been that these types of users fit very well in with that type of planning development. And as such, staff has supported the proposed rezoning. The Plan Commission at their meeting of February twenty-eighth of this year recommended approval of that rezoning. So, and it's just kind of the, the final step in a number of things that we, we did to, in conjunction with the property owner to make this a little bit more easier and user-friendly to those types of businesses that may want to locate in this planning development. Again, being a public hearing, anyone with any questions, comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at one forty East Rossin Avenue, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council.
Great. So as a public hearing, we will make three calls. We will need, this will be the first, your name and address, please.
Kristen Parks with Saint John Properties, two thousand, Pewaki Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five-three-one-eight-five. And I'm just here to answer any questions from the board, see if you're, if I can be of any help, but.
Appreciate that, thank you. This will be the second call, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak on item eleven? Okay, we will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property at one forty East Rossin Avenue from M, M one manufacturing to B four general business with no change to approve the conditional use permits. Questions, Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski first to issue, right? So I think this was a long time coming because you've had all these multiple issues with all the tenants and so I'm glad that, I'm glad it's finally going from M one to B four so that the businesses that that property is attracting, we don't have to go through that extra work with conditional use permits and all, I mean, well, with the, getting the businesses that don't fit into the right zoning into the property that it's, it's appropriate for this. So, thank you for the hard work to get this done.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward on this one. With that, we will look for a motion on twelve, please. Kuzakowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number three zero six seven rezoning the property at one forty East Rossin Avenue from M one manufacturing to B four general business.
Duke Neack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duke Neack.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item thirteen is a request to rezone the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street from B two community business to B four general business with no change to the flood fringe district with a conditional use permit for vehicle rentals, moving vehicles only. Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by Fahim Ajem Mary, eighty-nine fifty LLC to rezone the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street from B two community business to B four general business, no change to the FF flood fringe district with a conditional use permit for vehicle rentals, moving vehicles only. Excuse me. Applicant Fahim Ajem Mary, eighty-nine fifty LLC, property owner Akil LLC, Anup Kohler. Legal description there follows, date of notice is March second, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting that the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street be rezoned from its current zoning of B two, which is community business, to B four, which is highway business, with a conditional use permit for vehicle rental. So vehicle rentals are considered a conditional use in the B four business zoning district. And per the submitted narrative, the applicant wishes to rent U-Haul vehicles in addition to the existing retail store operation at that location. In the initial review of this proposal, did staff did raise several concerns for the Commission to consider with respect to the proposed conditional use permit and the display and rental of U-Haul vehicles specifically in this, especially given consideration of some of the, some of the other impacts that have been associated with commercial properties in close proximity to adjacent residential areas, as well as some of the historical uses, the uses for types of rental facilities typically have occurred within more manufacturing type operations and met more manufacturing type areas. Those concerns were presented to the Commission and in their consideration of the proposal, the Plan Commission did take those into consideration. And they did actually recommend to the council that the proposed conditional use permit be granted. And they did propose conditions and restrictions to allow for that to happen. And we can kind of, and I apologize for the quality of this display, but the proposal is to allow for the play of four U-Haul or, sorry, four rental vehicles on the property as indicated they would have, they would be displayed on the north side of the property. And there would be no additional employees, the employees would be servicing that out of the current employees in the operation, vehicle hours between rental vehicles between ten, ten AM and five PM. And there would be no sales of other products associated with that and the conditions and restrictions also do regulate the, again, where they can be displayed, how they can be displayed, and some of the conditions for that. With that in mind, the Commission at their February fourteenth meeting did recommend a common council approval, the request subject to conditions and restrictions. And those conditions and restrictions were reviewed also and recommended for council consideration at the February twenty-eighth, twenty-three meeting. Again, this being a public hearing, anyone with any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street from B two community business to B four general business with a conditional use permit to allow for vehicle rentals, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, proceed to address your comments and or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls, this will be the first, anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anyone wishing to speak? Item thirteen. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to item fourteen, which is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street from B two community business to B four general business, no change to the flood fringe district with a conditional use permit for vehicle rentals. Open it up to the council. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, sometimes rental, vehicle rental businesses, you know, they, they fluctuate with supply and demand. And, you know, there could be at times where they don't have any rental vehicles there at all. But I would think that there's going to be times where they're going to have more than four there. I mean, people are going to drop off all hours of the day and night. They're not going to know that you can't go there if there's, if they see four, four vehicles parked there. So do they have a game plan in, in place if they, they show up the following morning and they see six or eight trucks out there? That's, that's the first question.
I guess, I guess that's a question for the company to answer. I guess our game plan is if there's more than four, you're getting cited. Because the conditional use permit, as written and as proposed, allows for a maximum of four vehicles.
Generally with a, with like a U-Haul place, I mean, you, you just don't have trucks, you have vehicle trailers, you know, dollies that you can rent. And those are probably going to be stored outside.
Those aren't allowed.
Okay, but they, they may show up.
No, Planning Commission ruled.
Okay. And then the supplies that go along with it, I assume they would put them inside the, inside the store.
No supplies.
Just trucks.
Just trucks.
Just the four trucks is what we agreed with, at Plan Commission.
Okay. Chris, any neighbors talk about this?
We didn't have any objections from the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken?
Yeah, I, well thankfully, we actually had a couple of months ago, a good opportunity to actually look at this in operation before it was actually approved. So it gave us a good insight into realize how impactful it would be on the, on the, on the area and the potential for actually surrounding properties in terms of how it looks and how it interacts with the potential development there and the, and the existing residential there. And I, I cannot support this use on that property at all.
Ken? Nelson? Okay. That said, motion on fourteen.
We will move to deny the rezoning of the property at eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-Seventh Street from B two community business to B four general business, but the condition done as, as well as denying of the conditional use permit due to the fact the establishment of conditional use will impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
I go no? I'm in favor of it then?
Motion is to deny.
The motion's to deny.
Okay. No.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
And Alderman Duke Neack.
Aye.
No, to deny.
Okay.
Three to one.
Three to one. Okay. It is, this is strictly informational, it's our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three annual assessment reevaluation. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Sarah Koschinski, City Treasurer. Last fall, we signed a successor agreement with Tyler Technologies for City Assessment Services. Part of that contract was to introduce a community education plan, which we have also, we've already rolled out some of it with the help of Leslie Flynn. We've overhauled the assessor's website to include a lot more information and tools for our taxpayers, including a helpful video entitled, "What is an Assessor?" Another part of that plan was to have Tyler Technologies attend council and do a presentation on the revaluation. So tonight I have Mark Link, the Regional Manager, and Marty Keen, the City Assessor, and they're going to do a presentation on the assessment revaluation and to give trends for values in Oak Creek for two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marty Keen, I'm with the Tyler Technologies Company, along with me is Mark Link. I operate as the assessor here, Mark is our regional manager. Here tonight to talk to you about the two thousand twenty-three revaluation. At this point in time, the values for the revaluation for two thousand twenty-three are complete. We've gone ahead and, and bundled the values up. We have them at our vendor right now, the notices are being printed, generated, they'll be inserted in envelopes and along with an informational document, they'll be introduced to mailstream on this Wednesday, the April the fifth. When you receive the notice, the notice has in it the value that we're proposing for two thousand twenty-three to be the new assessment. And as a, as a comparison, it'll have the prior year's value, two thousand and twenty-two. You'll be able to see the amount of change from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. With that change, the statutes have provided that there is a period where if you disagree with that value or have questions on the value, two different phases or two different steps that are available to you. The first step is something that is totally informal, no, no rules of evidence, no oaths. It's where we can meet with the assessor and our member, our staff, we could share information that's there, take into consideration information you believe that we have overlooked, we will share with you where we've come from with the, the information that we've used to establish your value. And once we get done speaking with everybody around May the twelfth, we will go ahead and mail out the results of that meeting. So we ask that you call, schedule an appointment, it's the most efficient way to do that instead of coming down and doing a bullpen thing like, am I next, when, when am I going to be called? Instead, you can plan a specific day, a specific time, we'll have a folder prepared with your information so that the meeting can be held and be conducted in a very efficient manner. After that period is all done and we've spoken to everybody and we notified them, the statutes have provided what's called the board review, which is a final time locally that an appeal could be started. Now, there are state statutes that govern that board of appeal, the processes that they follow, they, they're not an assessing body, they're there more as like a similar to a court, but they're, they're private individuals. Property owners present their information, the assessors provide their information, and they determine that body whether the assessment is, is fair and equitable or whether it needs to be changed and what it needs to be changed to. But it needs to be based on factual information. You cannot come to the board review and say, listen, I've come to the open book period, they don't want to change it, you guys being city of Oak Creek residents, I need you to change my value. They're, they're not an assessing body to do that, they will work off of information that if there's a situation where something is, is incorrect, not being considered properly, then they'll, I would hope, hope take that into consideration. Again, only really, like I said, factual information is what they should be considering. We've been doing revaluations here annually for the past few years. Before that, you know, back in, you know, back in the day, two thousand, you know, two, the early two thousand teens, we were doing revaluations like every two, three, four years. The statutes don't really provide any type of guidance as to like, you need to do this at this point in time. What they do provide though is, i- it's based off of a performance standard and that the Department of Revenue compares our assessments within the community to the equalized value, which is thought to be the market value of the community. And when it's not within ten percent of market value of the major classes, a time span begins to get it remedied so that you are within ten percent. You don't want to have a situation where you, you get to fifty percent of your value so that the property owners don't really understand with the assessment that's there, the changes that are made, how it impacts whatever their total tax liability would be. So we've been doing it every year, trying to stay ahead and trying to stay current instead of saving up those changes for four years and then passing it all along. So you could picture, for example, if you, if you change five percent a year, seven percent a year, and you held it up for four years, all of a sudden you'd be changing people's assessments by twenty, thirty, forty percent. It's pretty shocking. And if anything else, you want to be fair and equitable with your application of your assessment so that everybody pays their fair share. If there's an area or a class of property that's appreciating faster or not appreciating as fast, and you save those changes up for three, four years, on an annual basis, you keep providing that bias, they're not paying their fair share or they're paying more than they should be because we're not adjusting it as often as we should be. So that's why we've, we've taken it, trying to keep it efficient, taking a look at the sales from one year, applying it to the value, then the subsequent year, the next year, we'll use that same information we have on file, but to just substitute these newer sales. So in essence, as the market is evolving, your assessments are, are evolving, flowing with the marketplace instead of staying still and doing something in, in a mass, mass strong way. Here, we ended up, we did put together with the equalized values, a, a table that when we take a look at two thousand and nineteen, the value of the residential and commercial classes was around three point five billion dollars within the city of Oak Creek. And now with this one, two thousand twenty-three, we're looking at about five point three, it's short of five point three-five billion dollars of residential and commercial value. Now that is going to be the new construction, you know, buildings or additions, you know, conditions that are there that didn't exist, along with the way how the market has changed. You know, I was able in two thousand and nineteen to maybe sell my property for this value, come two thousand twenty. to maybe sell my property for this value. Come 2022, now it's different value as the market keeps evolving. So from twenty to nineteen to 2020, there was about a ten percent increase in value. Now, the commercials were about seventeen percent, and that includes the new construction. I believe we ended up having a reasonable new construction because I think from the economics in that timeframe, we were about five to six percent. So there's a lot of newer buildings, new projects that came online, which would be probably things that are on here in Drexel Town Square. The apartments were getting done. You know, IKEA came on board. Some of the other larger projects, you know, they're coming on board. And they're, that new construction, those buildings weren't there the year before. Now they're there. They're, they're starting to get picked up. You know, we go from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and now all of a sudden, we, we run up another three hundred million dollars to four point two eight eight million dollar, billion dollars. And then from there to 2022, we went to four point nine billion dollars. And this year, we're up about five point three four eight billion dollars. Now, again, that, you know, through the best knowledge that we have, through the, you know, the, the quality checks that we did, you know, we have not spoken to any of the property owners because the notices haven't been mailed yet. So we don't know if there's going to be any changes to that value or if the changes would be there. I, I don't see anything dramatic. I, I don't have a billion dollars sitting there like, darn, I missed that. No, our quality checks are good. And it'll be slight, but there may be some changes to that value. But I could share with you what that value is today. And that pretty much explains that.
Okay, thank you. Mark Link, I just want to add a couple of things on that particular slide. The, the 2019 through 2022 values, those are actual numbers from the Department of Revenue. So there's no hypotheticals there. And we wanted to illustrate to the council, again, the benefits of the annual reassessments. Without conducting the annual reassessments, if you looked at the 2022 numbers as an example, the thirty-eight percent increase overall, that's what property owners will be receiving in their notice of assessment if it had been a 2022 reevaluation without conducting one since 2019. So that's another purpose of this particular slide. The, the sixth column, where it's got the year compare and the year, year versus prior, that's a simple division of that particular year divided by the current. And you'll see the much more subtle changes in values that property owners were seeing over those years as opposed to the forty to fifty percent increase they might get by waiting over the four to five year period.
Now, this slide here is, reports on the, the recent revaluation that we did. As we take a look at the, the residential class that we had, we had four hundred and three sales that we considered in the revaluation, total assessed value, total sales price, and a couple of different ways how to analyze the assessment that we're trying to create with a sales price that existed. We take a look at what's called the weighted mean. It's simply taking the assessed value divided by the sales price totally. So in essence, the higher value with whatever that ratio is versus something that's lower in value with the ratio it is, has a bearing on whatever that overall ratio is. But our, our value is one hundred point five one percent. Again, our target's one hundred percent. We take a look at what's called the mean ratio. That's just taking a ratio for each one of those four hundred and three properties and averaging them straight out, giving everyone the same consideration. We're at one hundred point nine three percent. Something that a lot of people really rely on is what's called the median percentage. There, we have a number of one hundred point four two. So there, you're going to rank all of the ratios of the properties between the highest to the lowest. And in the middle is at one hundred point four two. And there's an equal number above and equal number below. So it's that central tendency point that's there. There's some deviation numbers that are there from the statistics that you run. The one thing that I always take a look at is like the coefficient of dispersion, the median. If, for example, we had ratios that were eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent, well, they'd average out to a hundred percent. You're doing a good job. Eighty, one twenty, that's equal to a hundred. But your dispersion number would be twenty percent. It'd be showing that there's such a great swing within those numbers. Our closer numbers are tighter at around four point two percent, which means that we should be more close around that one hundred percent number and that we're not way far apart and just averaging something in the middle. And then there's a price-related differential which takes a look at whether we're taking higher value properties and under assessing or over assessing them and under, lower value properties and, and under assessing them or over assessing them. And in this instance, being right at one hundred point four two percent, it's basically retreating all the properties fairly inequitably.
Marty, can you stay on that slide for one second? Can you go back one? It strikes me as highly unusual. No.
I have a hard time hearing.
One time forward. There you go. The second and third line on the top of the page, that really strikes me as unusual. Total sale prices actually were less than assessed.
One hundred thirty-one million, nine hundred and two thousand?
Yeah. So what, is there, is there a particular transaction that would have made that so a commercial transaction that was far off where you pegged it or anything, anything strike you as unusual?
Anyway.
Sorry, I'm not sure if Marty was following the question. I, I think I am. So the, that's a simple adding up the total assessed value of the residential sale properties and dividing that by the total sale prices of the properties that sold in that window that you see in the header to come up with that aggregate ratio. It's not unusual for it to be somewhere between ninety-eight and one hundred and two percent in a given year. Part two of that is with the sales being partly in November of 2021 through early part of 2022, there's some depreciation that's there. This is just a straight aggregate. So in other words, that one hundred point nine three, one hundred point five one, that includes the sales that occurred in early part of 2022. And you would expect to be a little bit over those sales that occurred in the first quarter of 2022, if, if you understand the answer that I'm giving.
Well, I'll take a word. It just strikes me as unusual that you have assessed values higher than.
It, it's not. It, it really is not.
We're to take a look at what was only the fourth quarter. The ratio will probably be like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. Sales very close to the day of the assessment. January first, ones, January, February, March, where the market has evolved over that year, the averages out to the one hundred. As long as I'm talking to you, do you have a feel for how many communities or percentage communities are doing the, maybe do it annually? When you're, no, you guys, you guys, Tyler does a lot of.
Yeah, we recommend it.
I know that, but what, you're, you guys are a big player in the national mortgage market, appraisal market. So what's, what's your feel for how many communities percentage wise actually do it annually?
In, in Wisconsin?
Sure.
I think one of our competitors that has around one hundred plus communities, they're doing a hybrid of what we're doing. We do a full revaluation, full sales analysis and so forth, whereas I believe they call it a, a full value maintenance, which is kind of a ups and downs year to year. So we, we think we're different on that. But so with that one particular vendor and ourselves, I would put it somewhere between a hundred and two hundred communities.
About how many?
Eighteen hundred and two. But there's a lot of small communities in the state, obviously.
So one of the things that we had here on this slide was the total value increase this year that we've seen at this point in time was about eleven percent. Residentially, we had ten percent increase of value from one year to the next. Commercial was about thirteen percent. So the difference there is the residential just comprises more of the, the total base. That's why it's not a split of the two. The percentage increase will vary from property to property. When, when we do the assessments, each one is based off the individual characteristics of that property. It's going to be taking a look at that story height, that style, that size, and pairing it up with assessments. The one thing we don't want to do, and it's not legal to do that, is to say, well, everything changed ten percent in the community. So heck, everybody gets a ten percent change. We can't do that. And that, you know, we, we try to do a fair and equitable job, taking the characteristics that we have, pairing it up with sales, making adjustments for differences in features or amenities, and deriving a brand new value. It represents the value as of January first, 2023. By state statute, all assessments are based on that date. Properties we considered in between November first, 2021, and December twenty twenty-two were used to come up with this value to January first, 2023. So every year, we just take and change the, the group of sales, make it, keep it current, drop the older sales off. Conditions occurring during 2023 will be reflected in next year's assessments. So if there's anything that happens with financing or whatever else, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at the sales that take place during 2023 in establishing the new value for 2024. And again, the goal of revaluation is to assume that the taxes are distributed equally and uniformly as well as to comply with state statutes, to, to value each property based on estimates of market value determined by its current market conditions, that each property owner is paying only their fair share property taxes per state statutes. That's, that's what we've always attempted to do. It's what we, we live by, what we, we want to do.
Mayor? Quick question, Marty, if I could. If you could go back aside, I think, I think I have a point to make here. Hopefully I'm making an accurate statement. When you, when you said on the next slide, distribute equitably and uniformly, most importantly in that statement, that's across the property types, right? So your commercial and industrial users versus your residential, your residential property owners, you and I, everybody in the room, in a state that's already disproportionately unfavorable to or relies upon property taxes to the detriment of the vast majority of single-family property owners, if you don't do that revaluation, if you go back one slide, if you don't do that revaluation, essentially the commercial value, the commercial property owners get a good deal for another year on the backs of the residential value because they, in this case, increased more. And if we didn't capture that with an annual assessment, the residential value, residential property owners would in that year be not necessarily impudent, but they would be paying a disproportionate share if the market actually said that commercial and property, commercial and industrial properties they should have increased more. So looking at that over time, and it swings back the other way, certainly. The market's been very hot from a residential standpoint. It may be the other way. But the annual revale captures and slices up the same pie that we have of the value across the community, the total value within the community, the tax base, and establishes a uniform and equitable way to balance that out across the property types. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So when a lot of folks say, you know, businesses or even multifamily properties aren't paying their fair share, the annual assessment is one way to make sure that across those property types that it's, it's equitably distributed. Does that make sense? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, yeah. That, that was part of my, one of my opening statements too, in that, you know, we, we were talking about by not doing it annually, you brought up the one thing there by class. I was also talking by, within a class, it could have been a type, property or a location by property by not doing annual assessments. I was saying that certain neighborhoods could be going up at a faster rate. They weren't paying their fair share versus other neighborhoods that weren't going up as fast, that, you know, by holding it back, we're overpaying within that time span. So that's why doing it annually keeps everybody on a fair and equitable stand going forward.
And just to add one more thing on the next slide there, on the percentage of increase slide, the, the third and fourth bullet, the, the January one, those are statutory dates. It's not a date that the assessor creates by statutes. Assessments are based off of January one annually. So that's why we're using sales that occurred up to January one, 2023, and why any market condition changes that occur in 2023 will be considered on the January one, 2024 assessments.
And one of the final slides that we had talked about the assessed value versus equalized value. The assessed value is the amount that I place on the, the assessment rule. The taxes are based off of what that value is. We were talking about the equalized value, the fair market value. That's an estimate of the fair market value based on the assessed value divided by the general level of assessment, the assessment ratio. The level of assessment is determined by the Department of Revenue annually. So the Department of Revenue maintains a value to put City of Oak Creek and all the other municipalities on a same type of level. So that, for example, when you take a look at Milwaukee Area Technical College, and we have Oak Creek, South Milwaukee, Franklin, Greendale, you know, City, Milwaukee, if, since the same person's not doing that assessment, how can they fairly inequitably collect property taxes to support what's there? If they use the assessments, we're not all at the same level, there's going to be municipalities that are paying more or less than their fair share. The Department of Revenue has calculated this equalized value, and they're using that as a, the test for our value and what the level of assessment is. So that's something when you ever hear the equalized value, the Department of Revenue, they analyze the sales that take place from year to year to develop a economic adjustment. And then, as assessors, we report to the Department of Revenue values of new construction, demolition, exemptions granted or denied or to, or no longer in place, shifts in classification. And that's the way how they take and develop that equalized value to use as, as a test against what our assessment is. Now, over the years here, we've been pretty good. We've been ninety-five to a hundred and one percent. So the numbers aren't really that, that far apart. But if you get a situation where you haven't done it for quite a few years, you can see your assessment's a hundred thousand dollars with the market value. It could be a hundred and fifty-three because you're at sixty-five percent. So if we were to change something by five thousand dollars, you think, well, it's not that much. But because of that level of assessment, maybe it wouldn't be because we're not doing it dollar for dollar and you can't relate to it. So that's why it's good to be at one hundred percent. It's very easily understood by the public. Want to add anything? And I guess I had it reserved at the end for questions and answers, but we got something I had in the middle there. But if there's any other questions, answers, we'd be more than happy to speak to you all.
Thank you, Marty. Steve?
Marty, you and I have had disagreements over the past couple of years. Most of it all generated with residents that came to me and didn't like how the first stage went.
Yeah.
I experienced that I didn't like it. But I understand now that a lot of the stuff you do is now dictated by state law. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room with regards to which, how you do your job. So I, I understand that. I have, I want to thank Sarah. Sarah, did you do the educational process, the program, or was it a combination with, with, with Marty and Tyler Technologies? Is that kind of a group effort? You know, the, the educational part of the, on the website or whatever you're putting out for the, okay. I, thank you for doing that. That was one of my, one of my issues when the contract came up and that it was a concession that you guys would do that to, to help educate the public. I, you know, for years, I haven't been happy with the yearly revaluations. I get complaints all the time. I explain it to them. I explain to the residents why we do it. Sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's, it's not. And I hope that why we do it is part of that educational material that you put out to, to the public. So I don't want to, because, because for me to try and change that, I was a lone man on the island and I was not going to win that fight. So I, I, I understand that. But I just want to, just one more thing which is totally out of the blue. This past weekend, I had comments with a friend of mine who lives in South Milwaukee, and you may already know this, but we broached the whole topic of the revaluations. You know, hey, Oak Creek does it every year. The pros and cons of doing it every three years and so on and so forth. And, and he, he understood that. And I said, so, so what does South Milwaukee do? Just trying to get some information. He says, well, we do it every, we do it every five years. And I went, well, how do you overcome that issue at the end of five years that Oak Creek would have if we did it every three years? And he said that they, they have some sort of process where there's a gradual process within that five-year period with regards to property assessment. So I don't know if you have time, but it would be nice to get some detailed information as to the process of South Milwaukee using. as to the process of South Milwaukee, because I know they're a completely different city compared to Oak Creek with regards to industry and stuff like that, and size and so forth. So just maybe for my gratification, maybe anybody else who might be interested in the one-year, three-year, five-year plan, if you could find out how they do it, how it works, and then see if it would conceivably work in Oak Creek. I'm not asking for it to be something that we would do, but it would just, now that, you know, you talked about 100 or 200 cities in a state out of, you know, 1,200 communities to do it one year, okay, you know, what's a five-year thing look like? And if it doesn't work, nothing ventured, nothing gained. So that's my, that's my statements and my request.
Yeah, and, you know, I've heard, I mean, we've gone round and round on the open book thing, I've been working, too, with Brian to make sure that, and Brian is one who's been assisting me, you know, I appreciate the feedback out there, because I'd like to say that, you know, when somebody comes in and talks us about their assessment, if they have a question, whether it's being correct or incorrect, you know, I'm taking a look, I mean, we've spent a lot of time with the information that was there, analyzing the market, trying to figure out some 403 property owners that were willing to sell their property for a certain amount, 403 property owners that were willing to pay so much for their property, have to get into their minds to figure out, how did they come up with that final value? And come up with a model so that everybody can fairly and equitatively share in that same process. So there's a lot of work in trying to come up with what that final value is. Now, if we disagree on something, that leads me to believe, what's wrong? Why aren't we matching up? And that's what we should be doing at Open Book, if anything else, is going over the information and having that conversation to make sure that what we have is correct. Do we have the right objective information? Is the building the right size? Do we have all those pieces that are there? There is a qualitative part of what's there, and we have to take that qualitative part, make it quantity-based. From the standpoint of construction materials, workmanship, you know, the construction techniques, the cost that's involved, I think we're pretty good, but the one thing that could be debatable would be depreciation, the loss in value due to physical wear and tear, functional obsolescence, economic obsolescence. So did we consider all the things properly? We're going to be taking a look at sales within a neighborhood, we can, based on the type of property with its overall condition, desirability, utility, we'll be able to take a look and, with a rating, develop that depreciation as to what the market's trying to recognize. Now, it's up to us to take a look at the next subject property and say, okay, that's great, a neighborhood average, but what about this one individual property in front of us? Are we making the proper considerations, or there should be different considerations? And that's part of the interview process of what's there. So that's what we try to do with the Open Book period, what we talk about. We'll show you the sales, show the information that's there, we take into consideration the information you wish us to look at. And that's what we do with the Open Book, and I try to work with my staff so that they give the best type of service possible, and I listen in on the ones that are there, I do the ones that are there, and if there's any feedback, let me know about it, and I'll take a look at it. But that's what we try to do, is we try to give everybody a fair shake as to what's out there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Chris, anything?
I do a question for Sarah, just so I make certain I have this correct. So the assessments will be mailed out April 5th, is that correct? Okay, and then that informational or educational information will be included in the mailer? Okay. Scary.
Everybody likes the web.
After a certain age, they don't.
Yeah, a lot of the older folks, they'd rather have it, you know, printed.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, Rich, but...
No, and you're with me, yeah, they're right.
They'd rather see it in the mail and read it versus navigate the website.
Yeah, and like I say, the Open Book period, we're more than accommodating within our time span that's there. Like I said, we set up days and times to speak to you, you know, you can come on down and speak with us, and even if it doesn't work out for you, we'll be able to, you know, through the past couple of years, we've developed a process that we can do something online through like a Zoom meeting or some sort of phone conference, you know, we can get the documentation into your hands and be just as efficient doing what we're doing then, instead of having to take your time out to run down here if it's too difficult to do. So give us a call, we'll work with you.
Okay, and Andrew, I know you've been receptive, was it, if we had residents that had questioned about this reevaluation process, do we direct that through your office, or do we go through Marty or Sarah?
Please, no. I know. Sarah, Leslie, the team did a great job of beefing up that website this year, I had an opportunity to look at it this afternoon, there's a video on there. I know not everybody uses the internet, but, you know, 90% of us do, so it's considerable. And I said this probably a couple of years ago, and I'll just reiterate, we had, how many in Open Book last year, probably one of the higher years, it was like a couple hundred at Open Book for appointments? If your property values are going down 10, 12, 20%, you're going to have a roomful of people wondering why their lifetime investment is losing equity, and conversely, if you don't do a revaluation for five years, you're going to have triple, quadruple, whatever the next one above that is, of people beating down your door, wondering why their assessments went up 40%. It's, nobody likes assessment, nobody likes property taxes, I think we're all in that same boat, necessary evil argument here, but as you can, you can go out and read those communities, Wauwatosa was one two or three years ago, you know, people were getting significant, significant assessments, and people automatically equate assessment to tax burden, which also is not exactly the case, it's how you distribute the pie, because you only have one pie. So how big is the residential pie, part of the pizza? How big is the commercial and making that equitable is really important for people to consider. So I know not everybody, it's very complicated, we spent a lot of time on it, you hear it every year, so getting, you know, everybody out there that's vested in having a property and paying property taxes here to understand is just, you know, it's not something you can achieve, so we deal with this every year.
And I have no issue with the frequency of the assessments. Again, I haven't had a chance, and my apologies to Leslie and Sarah for not seeing that updated information on the website, I will make certain that I will do that and share that with any comments that come in after April 5th. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything further from Marty? Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving along, item 16 is consideration of a resolution approving the Wisconsin State Local Government Memorandum of Understanding for the Allocation of Opioid Settlement Proceeds and the Addendum to the Wisconsin Local Government Regarding the Opioid Legislation, MDL 2804, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio. Explain all that, I'm going to ask Melissa to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. It was such a long title that that sort of encapsulates everything. So Council has reviewed a number of documents, including a prior MOU, that was the initial piece in December 2021, where we therefore entered into settlement, I guess I would say, negotiations since then in terms of parties that are agreeing to settle. Since then, on February of this year, you also approved a document that related to certain entities potentially filing for bankruptcy, so that involved a different pot of settlement. This is yet before you an MOU that addresses a different round of potential settlements. So there's different parties involved at each of these approvals that I'm bringing before you, and this one involves subsidiaries of Walgreens, Walmart, CVS. So at the end of the day, this is marching forward, next approvals, the MOU is what I'm asking you to approve, and the addendum is consistent with ratifying what you've already approved, because certain of the parties have changed, and in terms of the formulation of how the proceeds will be allocated, that is the purpose of the addendum. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Melissa regarding this? Okay, seeing none, motion on 16.
You have a move to approve Resolution 12400-040323, approving the Wisconsin State Local Government Memorandum of Understanding for the Allocation of Opiate Settlement Proceeds and the Addendum to the Wisconsin Local Government Regarding Enray Opiate Litigation, MDL 2804, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Honorable Man Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And 17 concerns community development, and it's consideration approving a certified survey map for Ask Anderson Ashton for the properties at 6340, 6448, and 6460 South Howell, and 239, and 325 East College Avenue. Doug?
Yeah, thanks, Senator. The applicant is requesting approval of a CSM for the properties that we just mentioned, not going to go over those all again. It's really a reconfiguration of those properties, there's four properties, three or four properties right now, they'd be consolidating that into two properties. Following the reconfiguration, lot one would just be under, sit on the corner, would be just less than eight and a half acres in size, and lot two would be the remaining properties of over just nine, over 19 acres. Each one of those properties does meet the minimum criteria for the M1 manufacturing and B4 general business zoning districts. Just as a side note, I mean, this was accompanying a larger development plan for rezoning and planning development that is currently in process, but this is just, the land division stands alone, and that's what we're considering this evening, recognizing again that the proposed land division is in conformance with the requirements of both the E4 and M1 zoning codes. That being said, Plan Commission did review the post-certified survey map, they did make a recommendation to approve the CSM, subject to a number of conditions which are listed in your council report and the adopted resolution, and with that in mind, they did again recommend approval of the CSM, and would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Doug. Questions? Steve?
Sorry, seems like it's my night. For those of you not at the Plan Commission meeting, the, what's in progress, as Doug said, was the fact that the following item on the Plan Commission was a request to rezone that property to heavy manufacturing, and it did not pass because the residents of Jewel Street and myself were here expressing opposition to the rezoning, because we felt that the engine repair place that was just a small corner of the property...
Steve, the agenda's for the CSM, not the rezone.
I understand that, but I'm trying to give some background on the fact that, to me, the CSM for this entire parcel could be moot of sorts, because the rezone didn't pass, and the, the fact that they want to create these parcels and have this eventual heavy manufacturing in what's called a business, a business park, we feel that that type of business belongs in an industrial park and not at that corner. So what I'm saying is that the, getting the CSM for parcels on this property is, to me, moot, because we didn't rezone the property at the applicant's request, that would be relative to the CSM, so...
If I may, Alderman, and you're correct in what you stated, however, recognize, please, that a land division is not, as a prerequisite to a land division, there is no condition that a property has to be zoned. If you would imagine for the moment that this was just somebody who's like, hey, I've got four or five properties, I really want to combine them into two properties, do they meet the zoning code and the dimensional requirements for those zoning districts? Yes, and the presumption should be that, barring any circumstances which would lead you to not approve that map, I guess the presumption would be that it meets your codes, you should approve it. So I understand that, I mean, you and the commission had some concerns about a potential user of one of those properties, but I don't know that that's grounds, or legitimate grounds for not letting someone avail themselves of the opportunity to divide their property, in this case, combine their property in accordance with their municipal code.
Again, they want to put in heavy manufacturing, and it's...
Uses does not matter.
The comprehensive plan calls for a business park, and I don't, and we don't agree that that business is a business park environment, it's an industrial park development. So those are my comments, I just wanted to make that history relative to this agenda item, and just say that I don't, I don't support this based on what the Plan Commission voted on with regards to rezoning. I understand, I appreciate what you said, Doug, but that's my, that's my opinion.
Fair enough. Doug, clarify, Ask Anderson owns the property currently?
It's actually, they're in a...
Anderson.
They are with a, there's a potential partnership between the property owner and them to develop a business park at that location.
The usual, that a entity that doesn't own a property with a CSM?
It's not unusual in the sense that if you've got an accepted offer or some binding legal, legal right to make that application, you have that ability.
Sir?
Eric Newman with Anderson Ashton, 33...
Yeah, you got it.
I'm sorry, Eric Newman, Anderson Ashton, 33, West Link Street, Franklin, Wisconsin. I can answer questions that anyone has regarding this matter, and just to be concise, the current property on the corner of Howell and, and the college is zoned M1, there's a small remnant of this CSM lot, number one, that is zoned B4. So it already is zoned M1 for three-fifths of the site itself, and we are working with staff to work through the rest of it. And the developer who owns the property is aware that the remaining parcel is B4, and they're happy with B4 at this point in time.
Once again, we're getting more into a zoning, it's really just...
And we are not, we did not ask for heavy manufacturing for the remaining parcel, we asked for M1, which specifically excludes heavy manufacturing.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, motion on 17.
Guzikowski makes a motion that the common council adopts Resolution Number 24, 12401 04323, Resolution approving certified survey map submitted by Matthew Marion from Marion Ashton for the properties at 6340 and 6448 and 6460 South Howell Avenue and 329 and, I'm sorry, 239 and 325 East College Avenue.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Honorable Man Kirkowski.
No.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
That'll get us to item 18, which concerns fire. That's consideration of a motion to approve to execute a purchase contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus Inc. for the purchase of a Pierce 100-foot aerial tower in the amount of $1,947,348. And with us is Chief Kresic, Havy, and the whole crew. Welcome, guys.
Hey, good evening, Council. Mike Kresic, Representative Fire Department. As the mayor said, with me tonight, Assistant Chief Michael Havy and Lieutenant Eric Hare. So the, as Mike preps our presentation, the bottom line tonight, the bottom line up front is we are requesting approval to enter into a purchase agreement with Reliant Fire Apparatus for a Pierce manufacturing 100-foot aerial tower in the amount of $1,947,398. There's a correction on the council report, I believe it is listed as $1,947,348, it is $398.
Bust a bang.
I'll cover that extra 50. The background on this project, this is related, this purchase request is related to CIP Project 23009. Again, this was our request last budget cycle to replace a 1999 Pierce manufacturing aerial tower. The expected life on an aerial apparatus in the fire service is generally 20 to 25 years. At this point, we are at the 24-year mark on our existing ladder, and with the last budget... last budget request, we are looking to move ahead to replace that with a current model. Of notes, all of the department's current fire suppression apparatus have been manufactured by Pierce. That plays heavily into our decision to continue with Pierce. The work group that was established to look into our next aerial apparatus did explore the potential of going with different manufacturers. Several items led us back to Pierce. Again, all of our current apparatus are Pierce. In terms of maintenance familiarity and parts, that is a huge advantage to the organization and our mechanics to stay with the same vendor. Other factors that played into it was our history with the apparatus, the reliability of the Pierce product, which is built in Appleton, and some of the feedback we received with our, from our neighbors. What we'll talk a little bit about at the end, and maybe most striking, is staying with Pierce allowed us to compress the timeframe to develop the specifications for this apparatus. Going with a different manufacturer would require a longer time to prepare specs, and when you look at a thirty-eight to forty-two month lead time to obtain the apparatus, time was of the essence for us. The purchase agreement would be through Reliant Fire Apparatus. They are the sole agency that represents Pierce in southern Wisconsin. I'll talk a little bit about some of the key features associated with the apparatus and go through in detail three of them because I believe they impact the price request on this spec-ed out truck. When we went through the CIP process, we looked at our existing apparatus. We looked at our existing ladder truck to really get the, the baseline for what the potential cost would be. Obviously, things have changed substantially in twenty-four years since our last ladder purchase, and over the last three to five years, it's moved even more with supply chain issues and just cost of labor associated with builds. The, this will be a twenty-five-year investment for the city, for the community, and we're very cognizant of the costs associated with this. The committee's instructions were to get it right, not only for the needs of the department and the community today, but also to project into the future what those needs may be. The specs that the committee worked through, it's a Pierce enforcer chassis, which basically the different chassis models allow certain features as far as cab configuration, sight lines, and controls. It would be a one-hundred-foot mid-mount ladder. Our existing is a rear-mount turntable. The committee looked at going to a one-hundred-foot mid-mount where the turntable will be located mid-ship on the apparatus. It will include a T-three rear axle, a Cummins X-15 six-hundred-five horsepower motor, two-thousand gallon per minute pump, and three-hundred gallon water tank. So to break some of those features down a little bit, because they do impact the cost from what was initially presented in our CIP request, the one-hundred-foot mid-mount ladder, shorter ladder sections result from the mid-mount configuration, which results in better operations in tight spaces. So when we look at Drexel Town Square, when we look at the development along the lakefront, when we look at the development near IKEA, the confined roadways, the, the shorter distances between buildings, it makes it very difficult to deploy our current ladder truck. Going to a mid-mount does present us with the opportunity to have better access to those structures. Mid-mount ladders present better below-grade operational capacity. They have a lower center of gravity and better visibility. If you're familiar with our existing truck, the bucket sits over the front end. With a mid-mount, the bucket sits at the rear of the apparatus. With that bucket over the front end, it creates a, a challenge for drivers of that apparatus from lines of sight and depth perception. There are certain technological advancements in a mid-mount ladder that are not available in a, in a rear-mount ladder, and the ability to go with a mid-mount allowed us to keep the same cab configuration with that enforcer chassis, which builds some operational familiarity as we talk about the engine requests coming up next. The T-three rear axle-
Mike, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
How long has this mid-mount format been? Well-tested, well, well-used?
It is. It is not uncommon in the service. I couldn't tell you exactly how long it's been, but it's not, it's not a new-
Been around for a while, it isn't like a brand-new product.
Correct, correct. So we're going to talk a little bit about the T-three rear axle because that does add some price to what was also presented in the CIP. It's an established tried-and-true rear axle used in military vehicles, and it's been around for years. What it allows with this apparatus, it allows the rear wheels to turn slightly. So as this vehicle steers, the rear wheels will steer along with it, which provides better turning radius and better maneuverability. Again, for some of the more confined spaces we'll be presented with in the future, this does allow that vehicle to have better access points. Because the rear wheels steer slightly, it's less wear and tear on tires, does allow us to go with fewer tires, four instead of eight. Related, there's also independent rear suspension, which equates to a better ride, which equates to less wear and tear on a vehicle. If anyone's had the opportunity to be in our existing ladder truck, I think you would understand the, just how stiff of a ride that is and the impact that has on all components on that vehicle. And the other feature I want to talk about is the Cummins X-15 motor. There's several options for motors associated with this apparatus. The recommendation is to go with the X-15. Local service center available to maintain Cummins motors. They are reliable, and we are familiar with them. Several are in service at the DPW, our mechanics have familiarity with that power plant. Provides better horsepower and torque for an eighty-thousand-pound vehicle, and comes with a mechanic recommendation. Gary Wagner provided his recommendation that we stick with that motor. We've only spec-ed this rig out, so it's very difficult to tell you what it will look like outside of blueprints, but this is an example of a rig with a similar configuration. I want to talk a little bit about the, the work group as it relates to this project. One of our strategic objectives in the department's twenty-one to twenty-six strategic plan is to assess and enhance all apparatus to ensure safe, reliable, and essential services to the community. That work group for the truck purchase was chaired by Lieutenant Eric Hare. Members of that included Battalion Chief John Martin, firefighter Dave Noss, firefighter Matt Mondelli. Assistant Chief Havy served as our administrative liaison, and Gary Wagner from the DPW served on that work group. The goal was to, again, spec-out an apparatus that meets the needs of the community today and twenty-five years into the future, with an understanding that it needed to happen quickly. The lead time for this apparatus is thirty-eight to forty-two months. If we placed an order tomorrow, we would look, be looking potentially at three and a half years before that rig shows up. That's maintenance we need to continue to perform on our existing apparatus. So I want to commend and thank that work group in a very short timeframe to spec-out a rig that we feel meets our needs today and into the future. Now, the fiscal impact of this project, during the CIP process, it was identified that this would be a prepayment to Pierce for the purchase. I would defer to Max to talk a little bit more about some of the decisions that have been made recently regarding the payment.
Thank you, Chief. Max Gagin, Assistant City Administrator and Controller. So when we talked about this in the fall, we thought we were going to do a prepayment option, just given where the market was at, and that led us to have an approved twenty-twenty-three CIP amount, about one point seven-three million. That was factoring in about a hundred and ten thousand of discounts, so total price about one point eight-five million if we did not have that discount. As you can see, just with some of the options that we've seen, the costs are just under about a hundred thousand more than we're anticipating, but, you know, while working with the chief, you know, we do have a strategy in order to help fund cost overage. So this apparatus is being funded with American Rescue Plan dollars, federal grant dollars. They have to be allocated by twenty-twenty-four and then fully spent by twenty-twenty-six. And to date, we've earned about eighty-five thousand dollars in interest earnings on it. And if we were to take the original CIP amount of the one point seven-three million dollars and invest that over the period of either the thirty-eight or forty-two months, we would earn enough interest in order to make up for any funding shortfall. And just looking at current rates, I mean, I was just looking at CD rates earlier today, and a two-year CD at five percent would earn more than enough interest to cover the cost overage. So, yeah, a little bit of a departure in that we thought we were going to do a prepayment, but given where interest rates are and given we do have a long runway on spending of those federal grant dollars, the more prudent option is actually to invest those in a fixed interest-bearing investment vehicle, generate some interest earnings, cover cost overages.
Question, Max or Chief, there was no mention anywhere of revenues from the sale of the old equipment? Would that be put again on the state auction? And what, is there a, an estimate as to what value those pieces of equipment would have?
We, we would auction off our older ladder truck. As far as an estimate of a cost or a revenue that we might see from that, it'd be tough for me to gauge right now. I think the market, you know, you're talking a twenty-five-year-old vehicle, relatively well-maintained, but still quite old. It's a little difficult to gauge. I've been surprised on some recent things we've auctioned off, so I'd hate to commit to a price on that, but I don't believe it would be substantial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No. And keep in mind, this is a piece of equipment that we need. Can't I go without it, and quite frankly, it'll be almost three years. That'll, that won't be a twenty-four-year-old piece of equipment, that'll be a twenty-seven year's equipment. So, um, yeah.
A hundred footer, that's comparable to what we currently have?
Yeah, right now, we do have a hundred-foot rear mount platform, so we're going to stay at the same height, but with it being mounted in the middle, you, you asked earlier when these started, they've been around since the seventies, but technology now that Pierce is putting on these trucks and the revisiting of the capabilities of putting that ladder in the middle is actually re-surging their popularity. So Milwaukee purchased three, we looked at their newest one, we were out in the city of Mesquite to test Coroner's fire, we looked at their mid-mount, and also the city of West Dallas has a mid-mount. So, and that actually was a Seagrave model. So we, we did try to get out in the community, see new Pierce, we looked at other manufacturers too, but it's going to be the nicest ladder truck in the area for sure when the city comes.
And you guys can, better technical, how, it's, it's a reach, will it serve every building in the community other than the parts of the power plant or?
Again, yeah, I mean, it's, it has its limitations to, you know, buildings that are set far back off the road, obviously, but like new apartment buildings and even Drexel Town Square here, we can deploy it in, in between on Main Street with that being a tight corridor. We couldn't just spin the old ladder truck because that's a thirty-three-foot section. Now we're talking a twenty-foot section, so we could spin this thing right in the middle and, and go down to ground floor and spray in if we had a large fire on the ground floor, which we could not do that with our current ladder truck.
Height-wise, we can serve what we need to serve?
I would say all of our multi-floor residential, certainly.
No, I just want to commend you, and as long as you're on this, we are building different types of neighborhoods, and it's really something that you guys, it's your business, you recognize it, what challenges are, but with neighborhoods that we traditionally aren't going to see or haven't seen like it like this, it's imperative to have the equipment that can serve the property. Hats off to the committee that came up with this in a tight timeframe, and delivery dates are tough, are very tough. You've got to try to plan three years out, so I really commend you going forward on this. Kudos to you two as well, Max, taking a look at my answers. Appreciate that. Anything further? Okay, seeing none. Motion?
Kuzikowski makes a motion that the, we approve, execute the purchase of fire, Reliant Fire Apparatus Inc. for the purchase of a hundred-foot aerial tower in the amount of one million nine forty-seven, three ninety-eight, right? Ninety-eight?
Kirk Kowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Niack?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kirk Kowski?
Aye.
Item nineteen is also fire and is consideration of a motion to approve to execute the purchase contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus Inc. for the purchase of a Pierce pumper in the amount of one million, four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Chief?
So much of what I just discussed will carry over to this particular request. The bottom line, requesting approval to enter into a purchase agreement with Reliant for a pumper in the amount of one million, four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. This one is related to CIP project twenty-three oh twelve, and we are going to be replacing a two thousand and three Pierce pumper. Again, all of our fire apparatus are Pierce, and the same thought process carried through on the engine specifications. The only difference with the pricing on this particular apparatus, the pumper apparatus, is there was a slight rebate using the Sourcewell Consortium pricing. Rebate was related to the Cummins motor, relatively low amount, but nonetheless, Reliant was able to find a little bit of a better deal. Key features associated with the pumper request, again, a Pierce enforcer chassis, we talked about it with the truck, maintaining a common chassis allows for crew familiarity, driver familiarity. We are requesting the addition of the Cummins X-15 five hundred sixty-five horsepower motor. This pumper will have a top-mount pump panel, will have a lowered rear hose bed, and a fifteen-hundred gallon per minute pump and five hundred gallon water tank. Talking about some of those key features, maybe most notably is the Cummins X-15 motor. Again, with the Cummins option, local service center, reliability and familiarity, again, the DPW maintains Cummins and utilizes them in several of their apparatus. That X-15 provides better horsepower and torque. It's a forty-eight thousand pound vehicle, and certainly that added horsepower, the low-end torque it does provide, in addition to some longevity, better performance in the city. And again, it came with the mechanic's recommendation. The other feature, which is a little bit of a departure from some of our apparatus types, is the top, top-mount pump panel. Our apparatus tend to have a, a side-mount pump panel on the driver's side. That is a somewhat of an industry standard, though there have been maneuvering away from that in recent times. The work of the committee, they looked at going to a to, top-mount panel, which provides a safer location for the operator and a better vantage point for pump operations. So they're not tied to one side of a vehicle, but rather they're upraised, elevated on that vehicle and can see all operations from that vantage. Our committee felt that was an important feature to include in our next apparatus. Again, specs only, but to give you an example, rough example of what that vehicle will look like, provided an image from a similar model. Again, I want to talk about that work group chaired by firefighter John Leanna, Lieutenant Jesse Techmiller, firefighter Charles Prins, firefighter Ian Perry, firefighter Sean Rungy, again, Mike as our administrative liaison, and Gary from the DPW. It was very similar to the truck. They were tasked with taking a look at our next pumper apparatus, understanding that it had to meet our needs today and build into the future. This is a fifteen-to-twenty-year investment for the community. We wanted to make sure that we got that right. Like the truck, it's a thirty-eight to forty-two month lead time. So again, that committee very nicely performed in a very short amount of time and put together specs for an apparatus that, that we feel very highly of. Now, the fiscal impact of this apparatus, at the point of that CIP, it was determined that this would be a pay at the point of inspection and delivery, and that has not changed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Chief Kresick?
How many runs you get out of one of these? How many runs you get out of one of these?
So you're roughly talking 59-50 on total call volume. At station one, you're in the range of 2,000-plus calls a year. The pumper apparatus responds to not only fire calls, but also EMS calls. So essentially, most of the runs, 90% of the runs that come out of that station, that apparatus will take. So 1,500 to 2,000 range.
Okay, seeing none. Again, nice job, please congratulate all, everybody that took part in both groups. Motion on 19.
Kirkowski make a motion to approve the execution of a purchase contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus Inc. for the purchase of a Pierce pumper in the amount of $1,4760.
Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye. And item 20 is engineering. It is a consideration of a motion to award the private property infiltration inflow, the PPI, Rowan Estates Lateral Inspection Unit Price Contract to Northern Pipe Inc. at an estimated cost of $22,777. Matt?
We're taking this, Mayor. Matt Sullivan, City Engineer, for you is a motion to award the PPI project for Rowan Estates to Northern Pipe. To give you a background, in March of 2022 is when we entered into a funding agreement with MMSD for this project. We've been working with MMSD and their consultant, OTI, develop this plan and this project. Part of that was public outreach to find homeowners in that area that wanted to participate. We went through a lengthy process, this where we sent out letters, they actually went door to door, actually called people. This process went on for many, many months. We did get 36 out of the 72 parcels, target was 50%. So we're hitting our target. So they were able to develop kind of new specs. We're doing a, what they consider a wet closed-circuit TV inspection. This is kind of a pilot project for them within the department, it's the first time they're doing it. The approach of this is to be able to identify, more clearly identify as a clear water infiltration, which would happen during rain events. So the specs were a little different, the process was a little different. We expected a little higher bids, but good news was, is that they came in probably a little lower than we expected. Did have discussions with MMSD on this on Friday. They concurred with our recommendation to move forward with reporting the contract to Northern Pipe. As soon as we can identify this, we'll start identifying storms in the future and try to get out there during actual rain events to do the cammering of the laterals that are participating within this project. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to.
Questions for Matt?
How's the storm?
It's my back first. That's actually quite a good, good value for the whole.
Yes, and I think during this process too, we might be able to identify as we're moving up the mains, ones that aren't participating, take pictures of those, and maybe approach those residences, that hey, you clearly have an issue, maybe we'd get some more participation. That was the other kind of caveat of this new type of method.
No further discussions or questions? Motion on 20, please.
We'll move to award the private property infiltration inflow, Rowan Estates Lateral Inspection Unit Price Contract to Northern Pipe Inc. at an estimated cost of $22,777.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 21, consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Will Surge Electric Inc. and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22005. Matthew?
Before you is the resolution for approval of that workmanship by Will Surge and moving on to our final contract payment of $1,500. The project was in preparation of the reconstruction of Rossin Avenue from 20th Street over to 27th. We didn't want to close this project out until that project was actually completed from Milwaukee County. We're at that stage, the lights are working, everything's to be functioning as expected, so we're just looking to close out that project through our final payment. Questions?
Okay, motion on 21.
Kirkowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12398-040323, accepting the workmanship of Will Surge Electric Inc. and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22005.
Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And item 22 is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Cornerstone Pavers LLC, authorizing the final contract payment under project number 17006. Matt?
Much like the last project, we are for you is the resolution for accepting workmanship of Cornerstone Pavers and their final contract payment of $700 for doing the parking lot improvements over at Oak Creek Police Department in the rear part of their area where they have their garbage pickup, just deteriorated asphalt. Gone through the work, restoration has been completed, project's done. We did have some overruns, that was, as we were removing the old asphalt, we discovered that the asphalt and the stone were not as thick as usually planned or within the plans that were supposed to be done. We had to remove some of that and do some excavation, add some more stone in order to achieve what we really needed to out there. So this is kind of like one of the first steps in trying to approve the overall parking lot, the first one, going to close that out. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Seeing no questions, motion.
We'll move to approve resolution 12399-040323, accepting the workmanship of Cornerstone Pavers LLC and authorizing final contract payment under project number 17006.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And item 23 is License Committee, I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's License Committee report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns?
All right, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the April 3, 2023 License Committee report. Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
And item 24 is our vendor summary report for March 26, 2023, in the amount of $563,306.57. Please take a look at your report, and if you have any questions, please ask the appropriate Satisfied, there's no questions? Motion.
Kirkowski make a motion to approve the March 26, 2023 Vendor Summary Report in the amount of $563,306.57.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Okay, and before we adjourn, tomorrow is Election Day, it is an election day, so please get out there, exercise your right to vote. This weekend, we have a pop-up beer garden at Divine located about 7200 South 27th Street, and it's also Easter weekend, so I want to wish you all bless it and safe holiday.
Before we chase out of here, Danny, Rich's last meeting?
Oh, yeah, and.
Did you forget about that already, Danny?
Man, and I even said Election Day. Well, I forgot, you've been here so long, I just, you know? I want to congratulate Rich.
Not yet. Not yet. Again, this is my last council meeting, and I guess I begin with the old cliche, the old time-worn cliche, boy, time sure flies when you're having fun. It again, has been an incredible six years. It's been truly an honor to serve the city of Oak Creek and more specifically, the residents of the 3rd District for the past six years. Again, it seems like yesterday that I took that oath of office for the very first time. I certainly know I had a heck of a lot more hair back then, and whatever there was, I think it was a little bit darker as well, but certainly that, that six years has, again, just flown by. I'm also very privileged to work alongside the folks up at the desk here, my colleagues on the council, and all of our other city team leaders, the departments, the department heads, you know, the staff in general. The dedication and commitment, it's amazing, and it's really a shining example of what good that people can do if they all work together as one. And I truly, truly mean that. It's, and excuse my language, it's been a hell of a six years. And I appreciate you being along there with me on that. So for me personally, and for our city as well, you know what, guys? The plans, they've been drawn, the foundation, it's been laid, and I eagerly look forward to, as I hope you do as well, to what lies ahead. So with that, Dukniak moves to adjourn.
No, you don't get to do this.
Oh, not yet? Okay.
Yeah, I'll have a little piece to speak, I suppose.
All right.
I'll be the first to go in. Yeah. Rich, it's really been an incredibly fun time to be served with you. Great addition to the council, I've served your constituency very well, your service to the community over these past years as director of the community center. Incredibly, I appreciate all the time you've committed, wife, enjoy your full-time retirement.
And we're hoping so, if, again, we get to a spot where my back gets fixed up, there will be significant change in my life without a doubt.
Well, it's been real, Rich, so.
Thank you. Take care.
Rich, thank you. You're one of a kind. Andrew, anything?
So, Rich, I took a leap about seven years ago and came to the city, and within the six months, I got two new aldermen and a new mayor to work with, so three out of seven in a matter of months after being appointed here. So I was very blessed to have one of those changes be you and to be able to work with you. It's your dedication to the city over the many years, long before, you know, my tenure here, it's spoken about, they know your contribution to this community. And the small part, I mean, you've been doing this, you've been serving the community for 20-some years in some capacity, this is a small part, but it's a really big part of your service, so thank you for doing that. It's not easy, and it takes a lot of dedication, so thank you.
Chief. Rich, it's been an honor and privilege and pleasure to sit on this side of the panel, the council with you these last six years, and also be with you on our wonderful License Committee meetings, you know, that we would have, and then out there on Shred Day when we had Shred Days out there, so good luck and best wishes, and don't be a stranger. I know where you live. No, I do agree. I mean, you kind of take it for granted, we're just kind of here, and we go through our motions, see each other every, every two weeks. We don't change very often, so I want to thank you for all your time, your talent, not just here, I mean, everybody's, we've known you for 25 years, everybody knows you in the city, Rich, and I'll wish you the best. Great health, and thank you for everything you've done, so.
Oh, you can move. Now, Dukniak move to adjourn the common council meeting of April 3, 2023.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you all for coming in and sticking with us tonight.